Oh.
I have a quorum.
Next week? Four? Oh.
Oh, wait, I'm not taking more than those.
Oh. Anyway, see, yeah, let's be that.
Can see before reading the second. In the table.
Want to. First, do the one thing.
I'm gonna call you like you said. The cats in the faces.
You don't want peanut? Why didn't you get a peanut?
Peanut, peanut.
Oh, because he goes to the kitchen.
It's natural. Usually, that's my neighbor, I'm a good neighbor.
Yes. Won't you be my neighbors? Mr. Rogers?
Interrogent. Mr. Rogers.
No, no, no. For Christmas.
And this board committee reports, are we not voting on them?
No, I think they're just the objects.
They're just objects, no? You know? It was, we talked about it.
On what? Do we have to roll on it?
My thought we were voting. We're not voting on the policies?
Why they're not there?
Yeah.
Oh, A E.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're there. I was like, we put them both names.
Okay.
And that way you could talk about them individually if you need.
Okay.
We just.
That's because I, I was like, wait a minute. Oh, okay. But it's, it's still.
Yes, it's still.
Okay. But they don't have to stand up anymore, right? With Dr. Ari Solá and.
No, that you don't want to.
No.
No, no, because you can talk about the policy yourself.
I trust Jack.
You chair the policy committee.
Okay.
I, I trust you, Jack.
Okay.
Jack, you're good.
What?
And then we don't consider.
Oh.
Yeah.
Three, two, both.
There is.
While the fifty.
He's going.
They went thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll have much. Some different policy. Don't like. Persevered. In the whole street. And one.
Your legend.
We're not wearing them. We gave, we gave one more. Because I can only go to one of the decorations, I can't get a book.
Aye.
Good afternoon, board members, college staff, administration faculty, students and guests. The time is six o'clock on this, the twenty-fifth day of April twenty twenty-four, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Delgado, can you say the prayer and Mr. Martinez, the pledge of allegiance? Please rise.
Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for all of our faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make those decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Ramos, could you please?
All roll. Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J D Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia?
Present.
Cindy Leendo?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Junior?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Present.
Karina Elizondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubella? Madam Chair, everyone's present and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mr. Rangel and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public testimony, do we have anybody? None. Thank you. Number five is recognitions, introductions of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. Five A introduction of personnel, personnel actions, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Uh, we have four new hires this month that we're very proud to introduce. They began uh early this month with Laredo College. So um as I call your names, if you'll please come to the front and then we'll take a picture with the board members. Uh, and our uh as a criminal justice instructor, Luis Martinez, recently retired from Laredo Police Department.
Welcome, sir.
Offsite and distance learning coordinator, Isela Mora. Adjournement and electrician for the south campus, Mr. Jesusi Sanchez. And an instructional technology specialist, Liliana Gutierrez. Welcome to the Laredo College family, all of you, and, and thank you for being here tonight and, and at our college as wonderful employees, we look forward to working with all of you, thank you.
Yes.
So much.
Everybody knows where I am. Yes, you can get in there. Or get a text.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One more, hold on, one, two, three.
Thank you and welcome to Laredo College. Dr. Ramirez, do you have?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, number six is the board committee reports. Six A is a program policy committee meeting report, Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos.
Madam Chair, um I'm gonna defer this with to Mr. Dr. David Ari Solá um so that we can discuss it and it's an eight A, eight E, I'm sorry. Um, and we're just gonna go over the proposed uh changes for those particular policies, but we can wait until we get to. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, we're just gonna wait a little bit. Come back, circle back to it.
Six B is finance and audit committee meeting report, Mr. Jorge J D Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board. Uh, we had a very successful finance and audit committee meeting in which most of the items that were discussed uh in the finance and audit committee uh will be present on the consent agenda as for the board packets. Uh, we had Mr. Vela report as far as our finances, as well as the situation with regards to our tax collection, uh which was also discussed, I think the only mention that I want to um discuss with the board or mention with the board is uh agenda item eight H, in which it says ratification on which we were supposed to receive the check today. We're still receiving the check thankfully from uh the generous generosity from licenciado Eduardo Garza and unit trade forwarding, uh but the check will be presented at a later time. Uh, and that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a faculty senate report, Mrs. Juliana Kelly.
Good evening, board members, Madam President, administration, members of the community. My name is Mrs. Julie Kelly, Faculty Senate President, thank you for having me this evening. I will be providing a brief um overview in terms of updates for the Faculty Senate. So first of all, I know I had mentioned this at previous meeting, but I really didn't dive into the Faculty Senate elections. I do have a short update and then I'm gonna be highlighting two departments again, as I've been doing for the past couple of months. So first of all, we are in the process of voting. We are having electronic votes for Faculty Senate. We have vice president, a position up for um this position, and then we have three at-large senators as well. Um, voting electronically will end tomorrow at six P M. And we're hoping that we'll have some new um candidates that will join the Faculty Senate um and participate in this wonderful um committee. Then the two departments that I'd like to focus on today, one of them is being the English Languages and Cultural Studies Department and then the Computer Science and Technology Department. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with Mr. Rene Montemayor. He is our department chair for our English Department or English Languages and Cultural Studies. And I just want to mention him, he has had numerous accolades, board members. Um, he has received the distinguished community college faculty award uh from the Texas Association of Chicanos and Higher Ed. He also has been to the Capitol this past, um I think April ninth and tenth at the Juca um presentation. And here he is in Washington, D C. Um, thank you, Rene, for sending this picture. Um, later this month, he will be in Austin for a recognition for the nine thought excellence award. And then, as he had mentioned previously at a previous board meeting, that he will be traveling to Spain as well for an alternate presenter for the Juca International Conference. So this is the leadership that we have board members in this particular department. Two of the faculty members that I would like to go over, Mr. Alan Webb. I'm not sure if you know Mr. Alan Webb, but he is an editor of La Frontera Magazine. Um, it is published here in conjunction with Laredo College. He has fifteen years of experience. He teaches um primarily composition, literature courses, honors instructor as well. He does hold a degree from, I believe, um Indiana University. He also has a master's in English from T A U. And he does have two years in his PhD program from the University of Kentucky. There is no doubt in my mind, board members, that he will be Dr. Webb pretty soon. So I'm really, really proud of presenting Mr. Webb. Besides this, he also publishes available at Barnes and Noble um these amazing stories from stressed college students um at Laredo College. This is the second volume, it is free, it is downloadable um to your Kindles or your devices. Um, great stories that we have here from our own Laredo College students. So it's a great, great publication if you have time to read it over the summer break. The other faculty member from the same department is our very own Senator, Ms. Amy Argayo or Amelia. She has twenty-two years of experience, board members. Um, she comes from of T A U. Check this out, she has a major in English and mathematics. How she did this, I do not know. Again, a very smart, intelligent woman. I have worked with her this past year, it is an honor working with her. She also has a master's in curriculum instruction with specialization in reading and she does have twenty-one graduate hours in English. Hobbies for Amy, she loves reading Mexican-American literature. She loves gardening, cooking, and she loves taking care of her chihuahua named Lulu Girl. So um she, I know, just a little thing on person. But she has been doing great things for the college board members. She has been presenting at the College Academic Support Programs Conference. Her session has been eight weeks is all you need. Fast track competition in eight weeks. It has been a challenge, as I stated before, the eight weeks for faculty, but we are doing it. And she has been presenting that it can be done. So um here is Amy again at another conference at the National Organization of Student Success Conference. And again, she gave the same talk about how it can be done. You can teach composition in eight weeks. So I'm really, really happy to work with her that she's able to present this not only to our faculty, but to other faculties around the state. Then the other department I like to focus on is the Computer Science and Technology Department. This department is under the director and uh director and leadership of Mr. Betis. He comes from a background of a bachelor and a master's in cybersecurity and information assurance from Western Governors University. Mr. Betis has eight years of experience, five years in higher ed, and he has numerous certifications, board members. Uh, COM T I A Network, I S C two system, security certified practitioner, E C Council certified ethical hacker. Now you might wonder, what is an ethical hacker, right? Um, kind of double edged there. After much research, what they do is that they practice vulnerabilities in systems, in databases, in um malicious, looking out for malicious hackers. So this is really good for the college board members because this is the leadership that we and our faculty that we are teaching our students. We want to make sure that they're ethical individuals, right? So um with that being said, this summer they will be holding boot um summer bootcamps in those same practices. COM T I A, security, um all of their courses in this particular department are one hundred percent O E R, zero cost to students, and they are exploring emerging technologies. A I, machine learning, automation and Internet of Things. Remember, guys, that this is the future. A I is at our doorstep, you cannot shy away from it. We have leaders like Mr. Betis and his faculty members that are teaching this to the students. And we want to make sure that we have skilled workforce, workforce students in automation, in A I, and of course, that they're ethical individuals, right? The department has maintained Cisco, Red Hat and Amazon Academy status. And then the program that they started back in twenty twenty-one, board members, the cybersecurity program has exploded in growth, as he puts. And again, we cannot shy away from technology, board members, it is here. It is the future, our students that we're gonna be having in the new future, they're gonna know more technology than you and I. So we have to make sure that they're skilled and that they're ethical individuals. So if you have any questions, I am available for questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly.
Thank you, guys.
The next item is uh number eight, consent agenda. But before we vote on it, we have item number eight. E. E. That Dr. Ari Solá will speak about. Which would be approved modifications to the following Laredo College Board policies.
C J local.
C J local transportation management, D E A B local compensation plan, wage and hour laws. Mr. P. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President and board members, that the best thing to do when you have a consent agenda item that you would like to discuss, because remember the consent agendas and items, a list of items that are passed without discussion. So if we're gonna discuss one, my recommendation is to make a motion to pull out A E, that would be seconded. And if it passes, then it's on the table. And then at that point, it could be discussed.
I make a motion. Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by
Second.
Mr. Delgado to pull eight E from consent agenda.
Then.
All in favor?
Aye. They can do.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now motion to approve?
Russ.
So.
For consent.
So now we can do the, the motion to approve all the rest?
If I, if I may, you could, you could do the motion, approve the rest and then come to eighty.
So I have a motion by by Ms. Leendo to approve items A A, B, C, D, F, G, H. Second by uh Mr. Delgado and Ms.
H, yes.
Yes.
It's E, no, E is the one.
Is one.
No, no.
No.
It's just a, I, I had just reported on the word that it says ratification.
Right. So I have a second by Mr. Delgado and uh Mrs. Vela. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So now it's A E.
Yes.
Approved modifications of the following Laredo College Board policies, Dr. David Ari Solá and uh Ms. Veronica Cardenas.
Good evening, board members, uh David Ari Solá, Vice President of Compliance and Risk Management here at the college. Uh, we are uh proposing that the board approve modifications to C J local. That's my policy. Um, so the policy, uh it's procedurally, there's a lot of things in the changes here that we've already been doing. So but we needed to put it in the policy manual to get it, give it a little bit more strength. Uh, but in a sense, uh even though the policy itself is titled student travel, the section that we're adding uh really focuses on um what employees have to do, right? So in a nutshell, employees have to meet uh Texas Department of Public Safety eligibility for driving on college business. Um, this applies to driving either their own personal vehicle for college business or a college rented or leased vehicle. Um, drivers need to have the appropriate license for whatever driving they're going to do, so in other words, if they're going to be driving a bus, it has to be a, a C D L with a passenger certification on there. Uh, our safety and risk management office, Ms. Cassandra and and uh Ms. Steph will be keeping the approved driver's list and they'll be refreshing every a couple of years, at least maybe even annually, uh if we need to. And um the, the bigger thing that we have here is that we have some accountability for drivers. So drivers are um explicitly forbidden from, say, texting and driving while they're driving on, they should do that anyway, but especially when they're driving on college business. And uh they'll be accountable for any violations, uh whether uh they are a traffic violation, so whatever they encounter while even if they're driving on co- college business, they are accountable for, for those. That's in a nutshell, the policy change.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Now, I know it says on the policy, driver eligibility will be reviewed every two years. I know even from that driver eligibility will be reviewed either every six months or every annually. Does that, does the policy need to reflect that we can? Because I think it would be preferable to have it at least on an annual basis, uh unless it's something that's required for the employee to notify the institution that either they get a violation, ticket, accident, whatever the case may be.
It is, it, it is.
Chair recognizes.
We, we could include the word minimal at, at, at minimum. Uh, two years at minimum, because we could do it more often. Um, I, I think we're working on um how we're going to collect the data and at some point uh if, if we can do it, every time somebody's gonna travel, we verify the data, it would be easier, but we could with your all's permission, uh we could put in the word at minimum. Right? So at a minimum of every two years, we would check. Uh, and that'll give us a little bit of leeway to, to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a corner when they're still trying to make sure we have the appropriate software in, in place to do this.
Can we do it minimum on an annual basis instead? Can we do that? Do it?
I, I, again, I don't want to say yes if we don't have all of the software ready.
And my concern is just that with most motor vehicle reports that come out, it's usually done on an every six month basis. Uh, and if we're doing it on every two years, we're going a year and a half into which something may come up that we're not, not to be born.
And, and I'll defer to Ms. uh Salinas as our safety nurse manager, but we do have an existing uh M O U with uh the Department of Public Safety that will help us somewhat with this.
Good evening, Cassandra Salinas, uh safety nurse manager. For the record, we do have an agreement with Texas Department of Public Safety Driver Record Check. This agreement is free of charge to the institution because we are a place of education. I'm able to run this record multiple times. It's not limited to how many I submit, it's not limited to um the individual, the amount of time that we need to submit um to check their eligibility, yes.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghead.
Yeah, I was about to say that. Uh, so I mean, so, so, yeah, just, I mean, it, it's at no cost, so it shouldn't be a huge impact. But it's just the time to actually be inserting all the drivers and then getting the report and then print them out to see if they're eligible or not.
This report is generally, uh, I can submit it by noon and I should get the report by six P M.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's pretty fast.
Chair recognizes Ms. Leendo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, is this requirement going to be just as needed on a case by case? If the employee needs to drive a vehicle or is it going to be a requirement on an employment application to have a driver's license?
So uh when you apply at Laredo College, you need a valid driver's license. And in that, in your application and when you get hired, you're um responsible to maintain a safe environment. And to me, as safety nurse manager, that does apply when somebody's behind the wheel, especially on Laredo College business. So yes, anybody whose job requires them to you, to get behind the wheel, uh we would be checking their, their driver record.
If the job does not require to the applicant to ever use a vehicle either of their own or of the college, the requirement will not be on the application that they must have a driver's license, is that correct?
No.
They do require.
Veronica Cardenas, Senior Director of Human Resources, for the record. Um, we do require pretty much all the job descriptions to have of the valid driver's license, especially because we have another campus that we require uh people, the employees to go back, back and forth. We also have um, you know, errands to run sometimes uh for events and things of that nature. So uh we've started including uh that as a requirement in the job description.
And, and I understand that it's, it's an important requirement, however, it does exclude some, you know, special needs applicants that might meet the qualification, but they don't have a driver's license because they're not able to drive. But so I'm just concerned, I know the city recently discussed this issue as well because it was prohibiting some very qualified candidates from applying for these positions because they require a driver's license.
And we do have a disclaimer um in our job description that any accommodations to fulfill the essential functions of the job uh or anything that prevents them, that to contact us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
So then, what?
Motion. Yeah, I know.
There's more.
Oh.
I'm just kidding.
Oh.
But no, on that note.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
So what are we going to go with? Are we going to go with his recommendation on a minimal of one year?
No, it's going to stay the same.
I think it'll have to stay the same for right now, and we'd have to change it at a later date if anything. If it's, if it's possible.
I don't think so. No, you make the amendment.
Yeah, if that's what I'm saying.
Oh.
So that's why, are you going to?
I think it'd be better for the institution to have it on an annual basis. So long as, I mean, obviously, we've already heard that the reporting uh, method is pretty easy and at no cost uh, to the institution, so.
So I guess Ms. Ramos will make the motion with the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Approve the modifications. Well, I'll let her finish the the second one.
Thanks.
So for DEAB local, uh, we're asking to modify the section of compensatory time. Uh, and it's uh, primarily to uh, bring in clarification as well as to put in what we have in practice. Uh, we're also uh, making a recommendation for the maximum hours um, to be reduced from eighty hours accrual maximum um, to forty hours. Uh, we're also making clarification on the duty year being a fiscal year. Uh, and also that we're going to be allowing a grace period of three months at the end of the fiscal year, should the employee, uh, for the employee to take that accrued comp time. Uh, and also if they do not, then uh, if they do not complete or finish those comp time hours, then they will be staying home until they do finish. That, in other words, we don't pay the accrued time off or compensation. Compensatory time.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
To approve the modifications to the following Laredo College Board policies. And uh, with the um, difference in CJ local transportation management to reflect an annual basis and DEAB local compensation plan, wage, and hour loss.
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. Delgado and Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is number nine, information items. The first one is nine eight, status of efforts to collect current year delinquent property taxes. Mr. Rusty Muir.
Thank you, Madam President, board members, and Dr. Ramirez. Rusty Muir, for the record. If you permit me, I would like to focus on some collection rates and then a trend, and then talk with you a little bit about what we've been doing since we last visited about this. The, you think about what's relevant here is what was our collection rate as of the end of January, as of the end of January this year? Why is that important? Because taxes are not delinquent through the end of January. They become delinquent February one, and that's when we step in and start collecting. So this year, at the end of January, the percentage of collection of outstanding current year's taxes was eighty point three two, eighty point three two percent. Last year, at the same timeframe, the collection rate was considerably higher, eighty four point nine nine. So when we received the tax accounts last year on February one, we were starting ahead, if you will. It was eighty four point nine nine percentage of collection. And since the taxes have become delinquent uh, February one, we've had sixty days. And so as of March thirty one, the collection rate for current year's taxes, including the delinquent taxes, it's ninety one point two one percent. And that is two percentage points uh, behind what we had last year. So at the end of January, uh, this year and last year, there was a spread of about five percentage points compared last year to this year. Now, come over to the end of March, the percent, the the gap is closing. We're closing that gap so that we we could try and and stay on top of collecting these current year's taxes. These delinquent, current year delinquent taxes. That's, of course, the the levy that is most important to you because it is the largest levy, the current year taxes. That's where you obtain the majority of your funding for the expenses of the institution. We we've been having some, you know, some roadblocks in in collecting that. I've talked to you a bit about it in the past. The latest happened uh, at the beginning of the of of April. And what we normally get is an update from the Webb County Tax Office at the beginning of every month. And it contains critical data that we use to target accounts. And this month, we didn't receive that until about a week ago. And the data that we received was not in a format that we could use. We could not access the critical information. Uh, we finally, uh, this morning received that that data. Uh, but, you know, we're here at the end of the month already, and so it's, it created a problem for us, and it hampered us in our ability to target uh, these accounts that we need to. And I was telling the Finance Committee and Dr. Ramirez uh, earlier this week that we realized last week at the beginning that this is just not going to work out. We're not going to get this data in a manner that's useful to us. So we did it by hand. We went over uh, over about a three or four day period and weeded out all the accounts that were not accounts that we could target. Because you have people that have over sixty five exemptions, so you can't go after those kinds. And you have people in bankruptcy. You can't go after those accounts. And there's other exemptions. Uh, so that was done by hand. Uh, I'm hoping that uh, this month's development doesn't put us behind further. I can say, as I reported to the Finance Committee, that we have all hands on deck on this. I mean, I've been meeting regularly this month with my staff and monitoring it closely. Yeah, I've also kept Dr. Ramirez up to date. You know, I view it as a, it's a three alarm fire, if you want to use that term. So we want to try to get uh, that collection rate is as close as possible uh, to what we had two years ago, three years ago, and four years ago. And we'll, we'll continue doing our best. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Uh, we talk about what our office does to try to collect these outstanding delinquent monies or anything else you have.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rusty, just a couple of questions. Um, I know you're giving us percentages like eighty point thirty two compared to eighty four point nine nine. Money wise, for the board, could know, and the audience, how much is, are we looking at, you know, when they, when you put a dollar sign to that? If you could give us a rough estimate.
Yeah, and let me see if I have that data here, but Mr. Vela may have some of that as well. But it looks like the the amount that is outstanding, that remains to be uh, collected as of the end of March was uh, four million forty two thousand. I think that's, that's right. And if you look back at the prime, it's because it's September, October, November, December, January, February, and then you get to March. So as of March thirty one, there's four million forty two thousand that remains to be collected. Now, last year, as of March thirty one, the figure was two million nine hundred and two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. So we were working at the end of March last year with a smaller amount. More had been collected. Now, there, there's another factor that affects that. The levy last year was less than the levy this year, so. But nonetheless, you know, again, you've got a wide eighty four point nine nine versus eighty point three two. That's a big difference. And so we're behind the eight ball, almost five percent.
Um, another, my my second question, Rusty, is um, other entities, kind of, I think you mentioned it that I believe other entities are also going through this. Have you reached out to, you know, you know, the I S Ds and and the city, not the city, the city, the Texas city, to be able to say if they're also in the same predicament?
The, the, I understand that Webb County is having some issues as well. Now, the I S D, uh, we're, we're seeing some of that, but the collection rate is a little closer in line to the historical average. And I, I think one of the things I mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting is that we're not at the historical average here. We're trending down.
Exactly.
We don't want to trend down. And and, but, but L I S D is closer to the historic rates. And as Mr. Angel, the historical average of being, maybe look back at the last ten or twelve years. Um, and and look at those figures.
Thank you.
But we, we, you know, we obviously depend on the data we receive from the tax office, and we need that data to to get this job done.
One more last question. Um, what was our collection rate, our final number for 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 last year?
Mr. Vela, do you have that with you?
So, good evening, board members. That's our Vela VP of Finance. For the record, uh, last year's collections totaled forty one million eight hundred forty seven thousand seven hundred ninety. That was uh, about ninety eight percent of our tax levy.
Ninety eight?
Yes.
And we're at eighty, eighty point thirty two.
Well, excuse me, eighty point three two when the taxes were still
Oh, yeah.
Not delinquent, right? And right now, we're ninety one point two one, ninety one point two. But again, that's two percentage points less than where we were last year, percentage wise. As of March thirty one, March thirty.
I guess my question would be, and this is for Dr. Ramirez, financially, where does this put us? You know, budget wise?
Well, hopefully.
Should we worry?
Uh, well, hopefully by by in the next thirty or forty five days, we should, we hope, we're hoping that the efforts that um, that they're putting into place will, will bring us back up to par. Um, I think that uh, because the levies were higher, we we may end up at par if our percentage rate is lower, but our collection is a little bit uh, more, more at par that with where we were last year. Um, ideally, we're we're hoping that some of our House Bill eight money
Mm-hmm.
may kick in and offset some of the the funds that we don't collect in taxes. Instead of it being an enhancement, it's going to be
Yeah, to cover.
It's going to be to cover. So hopefully we'll be able to use that, our new House Bill eight money for our new programming, instead of having to cover the cost of what we're missing out on our tax base.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm pretty confident that Mr. Muir and his team are gonna are getting after it and, and um, and we'll, we'll hopefully collect our funds, but, but I know they're, I know they're sending stuff out. And I know that people are coming in and they're going to their office. I I do think that it's a shame that instead of us being able to start this targeted collection in February, we're now doing it starting in April.
April.
And so we're sixty days behind schedule. And uh, I I think that's inexcusable. So and it's not Mr. Muir and his team's fault. I mean, it's, it, it's coming from the tax office, not providing us with the data when they should have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I had.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
You know, I think we need to remember that.
Your mic. Your mic.
Times are really bad right now, and everybody's having problems. And, you know, I have faith in Rusty and his firm that we will catch up, but, I mean, it's bad. Everything is going up in price, you know, and and we think about taxes. You know, our, the taxes didn't go up, but guess what? The valuation of our property went up. So, I mean, that's killing a lot of people. You know, and I mentioned at the meeting, you know, our committee meeting on Tuesday. You know, I went to the grocery store, bought two little bags. It was two hundred dollars. Then I filled up my car with gas and bought, got, and there's another, you know, seventy dollars. And, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's hard. It's, it's really hard. And I, I know that we'll collect it, but it's, it'll take time. And I don't know if it's going to get any better. That's what's so scary. I hope it does, but.
Chair recognizes, uh, Mrs. Garcia.
Mr. Muir, um.
Your mic.
You, um, it's on, right? Okay. Mr. Muir, you said that, that you just received that uh, information from the tax center just recently? That you needed the way you needed it?
Yes, ma'am. We, we received data last week that was not usable. And then it was either this morning or yesterday in the evening that we received. Um, I guess they made some modifications to it, and now we can import it into our program and see what we need to see. But we had already done that last week.
And so what I I want to know is that since when they gave it to you the first time, it wasn't what you needed?
Yes, ma'am.
When they gave it to you this time, it was. Does that mean from now on, they're going to give it to you on a timely basis, the way it's supposed to be? Like, do?
I'm counting on that. I can say that. Uh, I, I, we have made that clear. Absolutely. And and that's an excellent point. Uh, I will follow up tomorrow on that, just to be sure, you know, uh, reminding them, please be ready to provide that data to us the, the first week of May.
Now, I mean, they know how to do it. They just gave it to you. You know what I mean?
So.
So.
That's right.
There should be no reason why they should give it to you the other way.
Yes.
Again.
Right. Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Muir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. The next item is nine B, Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. Haku, Twenty Ninth Annual Capital Forum, Mr. Rene Montemayor and Mr. Julio Reyes.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, while they're getting ready with their presentation, uh, if you recall, uh, we recognized both of them as our enlace um, uh, nominees to Haku, which is the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, which is recognized globally. Uh, and both of them have uh, really made us proud. And so just as we ask you all to present on your travels, we're asking our teams to now present on their travels so that you know exactly what we're doing and when we're doing it. The goal is to provide our uh, aspiring administrative leaders uh, to have the right training and skill sets so that they can be successful. And this is one of those mid-level trainings that we can send faculty and staff. And the idea is that every year, we'll send one faculty member and one staff member to this particular training so that we can build our own and and provide them with the opportunities and the skill sets that they need. And so um, both uh, Mr. Montemayor and and Mr. Reyes have have done an outstanding job, and I wanted them to present to you. They just recently returned from D C, which was their second visit as a team. But go ahead. Sorry, guys.
Good evening, everyone. Julio Reyes, for the record, Director of Recomending Enrollment. Good evening, board, president, team. We're excited to be here today alongside with
Rene Montemayor, for the record, Chair of the English Languages and Culture Studies Department.
So as Dr. Ramirez mentioned, uh, Mr. Montemayor and I had the opportunity to be part of the first cohort of the Haku Enlace Mid Level, Mid Level Leadership Program. What this is actually, it's an opportunity for mid-level administrators at a campus be part of because we get the opportunity to work on a leadership framework, which is what Rene and I, throughout the whole program, we had the opportunity to actually come up or discuss with other, with other mid-level administrators at other campuses around the U S, different pillars. Um, while discussing Rene and I a little bit about this presentation and what we've learned, we came across these five pillars that we discussed with, with this cohort. So we started, of course, as you all know, as a college, we need a plan ahead. We need a plan to see what the future of our colleges, especially as, as administrators at an institution. So we, we talked about strategic planning, financial management, personal and social responsibility, student of first management, and academic of first management. As Dr. um, Ramirez mentioned, being mid-level administrators, we aspire to be upper administrators one day. So this gives us the opportunity to start understanding the background of what happens. This, this is, gives us the opportunity to start understanding and seeing what we as administrators have to start working on to continue moving forward. Not only do we mean virtually and face to face, but as Dr. Ramirez mentioned, we had the opportunity to go to Washington a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Montemayor will talk a little bit more about that.
So very quickly, uh, the actual program was six months in length, and we started in Chicago back in uh, late October, and some students were part of the, the, the travel. And uh, we, we were in contact with all these different mid-level management, mid-level leadership from throughout the United States, all of them Latinos, all of them Hispanic, uh, Mexican-American, so on, so on, and so forth. So we shared a lot of ideas at different levels uh, from, you know, from management and staff, from instructional side. Um, and then, once we left Chicago, we had a series of webinars. Anything from handling money, finance, leadership at different levels uh, in the United States, regional, international studies. So a series of webinars, and then it culminated in in the United States, regional, international studies. So a series of webinars, and then it culminated in DC a couple of weeks ago. And, and again, the same group, it was what, thirty-something? It was a group of thirty-something individuals from throughout the United States. Most, most of them were from Texas and California, but we got an overall, you know, United States overall feel towards each other. And we came, we became best friends. All of us are in contact still with all those individuals. Very nice. So we ended up in, 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 in DC, and we got an opportunity to visit our Henry Cuellar, you know? And, uh, this sadly, um, this, this time at DC, we didn't get a chance to take students this time. But we adopted, uh, what was it, three students from San Antonio? Not literally. Only for that event because they, they really, really wanted to meet Henry Cuellar. So we were like, yeah, come on, join us. And then we presented, we took pictures and, you know, it was, it was, it was quite, quite the experience. Not just the visit with Cuellar, not just the visit to DC, but the entire six-month program. And we'd like to thank you and all of us involved in allowing us to pursue this because we were very much appreciated for that opportunity and, and your support, of course.
And this will come culminate where?
And this will continue our travel. Our HACU International Conference is June. We want to thank you all for the, for the support and allowing us to actually go over to Salamanca, Spain in June to continue our partnership with HACU as an institution. As we move forward and as we continue seeing the future of Laredo College, we want to make sure that we continue building these relationships, not only here in the United States, but also internationally. So we're excited to go. We want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity. We're excited to come back and report after we come back from Salamanca, Spain, of what we learned, the different partnerships. So thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes, uh, Mrs. Ramos.
I, I just wanna say thank you for bringing this to, to the college. I believe that advocacy and networking and making sure that everybody knows who we are and where we are, um, allows us to be a voice in the playing field. And, uh, I've witnessed that before in the different, uh, sessions that I've been to with Naleo. And you will be, you will have that voice for us when you go. And you'll meet other people and they'll network, and it's all about advocacy, bringing us to the top and making sure that everybody knows who we are and what we are providing to our community. So thank you very much, but thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for allowing them to be able to participate and other individuals too as well in the future. Um, and I look forward to hearing about the wonderful things that you're gonna be learning and the wonderful people you're gonna be meeting. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anyone else?
We'll bring pictures.
Bring lots of pictures.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You the shepherd?
Next item is nine C Illusion Live Conference twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Albert Chavez, Dr. Horacio Salinas, Ms. Marilisa Ramirez and Mr. Gabriel E. Martinez.
And, and this conference, Madam Chair and, and Trustees, uh, Illusion is, as I've mentioned before, is the framework that we're using for our, our technology and our move to the cloud. Uh, the program is called SAS. Uh, the conference, uh, was at the beginning of this month, and, uh, so I asked, we took a, a, quite a large team, and so I asked for volunteers, and the four brave souls before you decided to volunteer and talk about the experience we all had.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Ramirez, College Administration, colleagues and guests. Uh, for the record, Albert Chavez, Associate Vice President, uh, for Information Technology. Alongside with me, I have
Marilisa Ramirez, Institutional Research Director, for the record.
Gabriel Martinez, uh, Administrator Assistant Manager, for the record.
Good evening, Horacio Salinas, Dean of Arts and Sciences.
We're excited to bring to you a report from the conference that we attended, April seventh to the tenth in San Antonio, Texas, for Illusion Live. That's the name of the conference. The theme for the three days were illuminate, innovate and inspire. And of course, for the, the, uh, the goals for the conference was to explore higher education's greatest opportunities with future-ready ideas, solutions and best practices designed to drive transformation. What is Illusion Live? Uh, again, like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, Illusion Live is the annual conference that our, uh, Student Information System Vendor puts together for its customers. And it basically allows higher education leaders to come together for game-changing solutions and industry insights. This is an international conference, so there were international schools there. So institutions worldwide converge to discover game-changing technology and build powerful connections. Uh, we had twenty-three attendees representing our institution. From the executive team, we had Dr. Anita Ramirez, our CFO, Mr. Zezar Vela, Dr. Fred Solis, and Ms. Veronica Cardenas. We had representatives from Academic Affairs, Compliance and Risk Management, Finance and Administration, Information Technology, Student Success and Enrollment, and Human Resources. I'm going to play, uh, for you a quick one-minute video that gives you an idea of the scale of the conference. And as a spoiler alert, somebody from this room will actually get a chance to speak in, in this video, so pay close attention.
Spoiler alert.
The eclipse is a perfect metaphor for the opportunity we have in our ecosystem. Like the sun, students are the center of our universe, and we are aligned on putting students first.
Every student you empower adds another point of light to our collective sky.
Well, it's rare you go to a conference where the day one kickoff, there's, you know, a interstellar significant event like a solar eclipse. It was really awesome to start the session off with a keynote this morning with the students singing The Light of the Future, right? And that was a really nice way to begin a conference and remind everybody why we're all here. And that's really for the students.
I've never been to an event like this. This is my first conference, adult thing, really. And it's been really, really fun. Everyone's been so welcoming and kind. It's actually really interesting.
The more we know about our students, the more we can connect them with the right people on our campuses.
We have to create a system across the campus to make sure that students feel invited.
Watching all of the attendees come in and just the joy, the excitement of everyone spending time together.
All the illusion staff is here. All the people that can give you answers are here.
It's almost like a homecoming. You know, you get to see so many of your friends and, and, and customers.
When my colleagues walked in and the team was clapping us in, she said, is this Disney World for the professionals?
As you saw Dr. Ramirez present on the first day, she was part of the, uh, one of the first panels during the first day of the conference. So she had the opportunity, along with another college president, to highlight some of the accomplishments that she has, uh, done here at Laredo College. She spoke about the meal plans, uh, some of the initiatives and workforce, among others. So, uh, we're very proud that Dr. Ramirez was there with us on that, for the conference. We're one of the very few or handful institutions that actually had their president there with them. So a lot of people were envious that we had our president there with us. And since she was part of the, the panel and spoke to close to, well, actually, a little over six thousand persons in the, in the crowd, uh, whenever they would see our name tag with Laredo College, they would really come up to us and speak to us. Uh, so, um, this is just two photos of the, the group that, that went with us. Um, the picture on the left is when we first got to the conference, and then, uh, the picture on the right is on that opening ceremony. Uh, up next, I'm gonna let, uh, Ms. Marilisa Ramirez present to you, uh, what we learned regarding, uh, reporting and analytics.
Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who made it possible for the twenty-three staff members to attend the conference. That was my first illusion conference, and I'm looking forward for the next one. So, um, I'm very excited to what the new banner platform, cloud platform has to offer. You know, through all the many, um, uh, sessions that I attended on Insight, Insight is the reporting and analytics tool. You know, the, that banner offers. Through all, every, every single session that I attended, you know, um, two powerful capabilities were highlighted. And these are the integration of data, different data sources, and the reporting and analytics tool, the power. So, uh, the, um, the integration of the data, different sources, you know, Insight provides the ability to share and access data among different, uh, solutions. So for instance, if right now we have collected data using different software with Insight, we're gonna be able to share that data. It's not gonna get lost, you know? We're gonna share that data. We're gonna be able to use it. So, and also it allows to connect existing, that our houses to the, to the new system, to, with Insight. For, in fact, Institutional Research, we have a data warehouse. You know, that we have collected for, I will say, more than twenty-three years, you know? So, we're gonna be able to share that data with other users. Also, the, um, the, the reporting and analytic, um, uh, capabilities are very, very great, you know? Um, the, the reporting tool, they allow, they're giving power to the user to create their own reports. You know, some of the reports are gonna require a little bit of programming, but the other, other reports is just a template where you can, you know, specify, and then you get your report. So, by empowering users, end-users to create their own reports, they're also gonna empower our department, Institutional Research, because we no longer are gonna have to be creating all those reports. We're gonna concentrate on, uh, analysis and predictive models. So I'm very grateful that I was able to attend, and I'm looking forward for next year's, if it's possible. And, um, it's, it was a very, very exciting experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, um, Ms. Dr. Horacio Salinas, who'll talk about AI impact on higher ed.
Good evening, Board Members. Again, I'm like, it's echo, Marilisa, I'm very thankful, uh, to Dr. Ramirez and to all of us that went. We really were able to bring in a lot of insights, learn a lot of new things. This is my second Illusion Conference, and I come to it from the academic side. And that is, how can we leverage the technology that is being implemented at the college to, you know, uh, help the students succeed? After all, as it was said in the video, and as we all say, who's at the center of our institution? The students, followed by the faculty who are with them daily. And then the, uh, all of the services that help the student in their lifecycle, from recruitment through instruction, through graduation, through career services, and so on and so forth. And one of the biggest things that came up this year, as you can imagine, was there are numerous, numerous workshops on the impact, on AI and the impact of higher ed. Those workshops were filled. Um, you know, I'm glad I reserved prior because I had a feeling. And so there were numerous of that. And then there was also numerous presentations by Illusion in how they are going to be incorporating AI technologies in their, uh, SAS platform, their banners and so on in the cloud. So given all that, these were my five takeaways on the impact of, of, of these tools for the following, uh, areas. Strategic alignment with institutional goals. The Illusion's tools will be able to recognize and understand our goals in the way we enhance our student, uh, success, improve completion rates, uh, improve faculty productivity and increase enrollment. The other thing that was real interesting in some of the workshops was how, once we're able to leverage AI and we get, we get familiar with it and trained, how we can, as an institution, because we will be efficient operationally throughout, is how we can gain a competitive advantage in the educational landscape. We'll be able to attract students through the data that we get, make informed decisions. We'll be able to keep them, or we will be able to, uh, secure funding and gain national recognition. Why? Because when we apply for grants and when we apply for, um, uh, recognition, such as through the Aspen or, or Excellencio or others, we will be able to have ready-made data clear and ready to put it together and hopefully have our better chances, uh, to, uh, get recognized. Decision-making and advanced analytics will be big. As you can imagine, data is, is, is extremely important. And with that, we'll have insights on student behavior, academic performance, student retention, and that will allow us to improve our pedagogy in the classroom. Um, and then, of course, enhancing the student experience, helping the students, again, from recruitment all the way through their uh, graduations and on to their careers, whether on to the university or to the workforce. And improving student, identifying our student needs, those that are at risk, um, and improving educational content, tailoring the learning information. And finally, one of the big things, of course, as you can imagine, is what about the ethics and the data privacy and so on and so forth? That was brought up numerous times, and AI is committed, or rather, Illusion is committed in, in, in incorporating AI and its tools to make sure that, uh, data privacy is secured, making sure of the biases, uh, address those and the algorithms, and then reinforce institutional's ethical operations. And that was my take. Now, Gabriel.
Uh, yes, in the conference, we learned a great deal of the direction Illusion is taking with Banner. Uh, this is the Illusion Cloud SAS, like Dr. Ramirez mentioned. Uh, SAS stands for Software as a Service. Uh, basically, what this means, they're gonna take our Banner's, uh, environment, which resides on servers here on campus, and they're gonna migrate it to the Illusion Cloud. And we're gonna access it through the internet. Uh, this environment is gonna be maintained and managed by Illusion. And this is a great advantage to my department because it's gonna free some time, so we can focus on collaborating with, uh, faculty, with the staff. And that way, we can bridge the gap between the functional and the technical aspects that exist in all systems. Here is the graph of the environment. I'm a very visual person, so this helped me a lot. Uh, here in the bottom, in the green semicircle, is where Banner's gonna reside and all of its components. Uh, next to it, in the purple, is the Ethos. Ethos is a tool that Illusion provides us. That's the way, uh, our technical staff and third parties, uh, applications are gonna interact with Banner. The next layer are the applications. Uh, they could be Illusion, or it could be a third party or partners. That's the way they are gonna interact with Banner. Uh, the last part is the Illusion Experience. This is a new portal, and this is a way the students, staff, faculty and alumni are gonna interact with Banner and all of its components. Um, also in the conference, we had an opportunity to, uh, familiarize ourselves with new technologies and new tools that Illusion is providing. And as well, uh, we were exposed to other practices and techniques other universities are using. So, uh, we can use that as information to better assist the end-users, so they can provide a better service to the students, which are, is our main goal. So I wanna thank you for providing me that, this opportunity. Uh, being in IT, I mean, we love information, so the more information we're exposed to, the better service you can give. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And back to Mr. Chavez, he's gonna wrap it up.
And so on the, on the third day, uh, or the final day, uh, Dr. Ramirez was picking on me because I'm a fan of William Shatner. So we actually had the opportunity to see William Shatner, who's ninety-three years old, uh, inspire us. So on the last day, the, the theme was Inspire. So, uh, he spoke to us for about forty-five minutes. Uh, I mean, they, it was a panel, so they asked him questions about his career. And he reminded everybody that he's Canadian, he's not American. Uh, so it was exciting to see, uh, William Shatner um, in the conference. So, um, one of the quotes that he mentioned, and I'll tell you why I chose it, but it, it's a little somber, but this is when he went to, to space, for real, right? Because Star Trek. But when he went to space, uh, this was what was going through his mind, uh, he said, "But when I looked in the opposite direction into space, there was no mystery, no majestic awe to behold. All I saw was death. I, I was so, I saw cold, dark, blackness and emptiness." Why did I choose that quote, uh, to summarize it? Because when, uh, the institution made the decision to move to SAS, it was a very big, um, project and a lot of unknowns. So basically, we were going into space into this
Black, black hole. They were all scared.
Everybody was scared. I mean, we're part of the, the first set of institutions, uh, that have made this transition. Uh, but in this conference, we got that reassurance that we're headed on the right track. Like the, the rest of the team mentioned, we had a lot of opportunities to network with other institutions. Uh, it, it was a, a great opportunity, uh, for us to attend this conference. It, it was a huge success, not just because it happened in Texas, and this is actually the first time. not just because it happened in Texas, and this is actually the first time that they they hold this conference in Texas. So we all walked that convention center in San Antonio from top to bottom, left to right. We got over, I don't know, twenty thousand footsteps or more. But again, uh in conclusion, I just wanna say thank you to administration for allowing us to attend the conference. Uh, the team came back re-energized and ready um for us to go live with Banner SAS. We will bring to you uh our our final project proposal or timeline. Uh, but in in summary, I can tell you that right now we are going to be going live with Banner SAS at the end of September. So it's exciting. Right now, we're finishing the last touches on on the project. Um, and then we're gonna have two months to test, and then we'll go live in in Sep- at the end of September. Any questions for the team?
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Well, I actually have a comment and a question. My comment, just wanna say congratulations. I know technology can be very intimidated regardless of the experience that you all have. Uh, so congratulations and thank you to help us get to the next level, because I'm sure we're going there. And my question is, do you guys become best friends like Mr. Monte Mayor and Mr. Vela? You guys need to go out of state.
The twenty, the twenty-three of us caravan over to San Antonio and came back. I mean, we we spent a lot of time together. I think uh we had a lot of opportunity to bond uh outside of of work. So it was a, it was an excellent uh opportunity. Because you know, at the day-to-day, I mean, it's one thing, but over there at the conference, uh it's a little bit more relaxed, so we get to have more conversations, right? Uh, I think it was, it was a great opportunity. I don't know if anybody from the team wants to add anything else.
And you're not the reason why they're amending that driving policy, right?
We behave, we had, we had Dr. Ramirez with us, uh watching us.
Thank you and congratulations.
And if I may add, we we really had an exceptional team of folks. They went to every session. They also, he's right, they walked through that that um exhibit hall. I don't know how many times and picked up the same goodies over and over and over again, but but uh, but it it was an exceptional team and we're uh for Texas, uh we're the first community college to go to SAS in our area. And so this is a huge uh black hole. When I told um Albert that we were gonna do this, he looked at me like, I think I'm gonna go work someplace else. And I said, no, you're not. We're gonna do this. Uh, and and the reality is that everybody was scared. But we realized that there are institutions across the globe that are ahead of us, and then there are institutions that are that are struggling far worse than we were. And so now, all of us made friends with people from a lot of other places that are calling us and sending us emails and asking us, "How did you do this? How did you do that?" And so sometimes by being able to just share with others our our opportunities and our challenges, it helps us find solutions to our own situations. And so uh I wanna thank the team. We did caravan together. We left here following each other and we took six vehicles and um and by the time we were coming back, everybody wanted to just like come on their own, forget it, goodbye. But uh, but it was a great, a great experience and um, I myself did four sessions at that conference. Uh, and uh it it was an eye-opening experience, I think, for all of us. And so uh, thank you for the opportunity to for all of us to be there. It it was a, it was a great trip. It's not often that our employees get to go to an international conference of this magnitude. The fact that it was in San Antonio, we had to take advantage of it because we saved a lot of money and we took a lot of great people to have a great experience uh and to help them grow within their own, with their, within their own areas and their own fields. So so thank you for that. And thank you to the team. I think a lot of them are here. If you went on the trip, stand up and and be recognized. I think there was a whole bunch of you in here. Mr. Vela? So hopefully next year, we'll be able to take another group of folks um to give them the experience. But certainly, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chavez will lead the charge as well next year. So thank you all.
It's in Florida, so it might be in Disneyland. But again, thank you for the opportunity to uh that was allowed to us to attend the conference. And thank you again for allowing us to present uh uh our, an update on on the conference.
Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. And thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for representing us at the uh the conference as well. Next item is nine D, Student Success Report. Dr. Fred Solis and Ms. Jessica Trevino.
Good evening, Madam President, um President Ramirez, colleagues, members of the audience. Uh, Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment for the Record.
Good evening, Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management for the Record.
Before I start the presentation, I would just like to take this time to inform the board that as we're holding our board meeting this evening, our esports team is currently in competition for a national championship. Hopefully, we will know the results before the end of the night, uh if not, definitely by tomorrow morning. So just wanted to share them.
That's great. It's great.
So uh in reference to our enrollment, uh our enrollment uh opened up for on April the eighth for all our remaining sessions, beginning with May semester, which will begin on May the fifteenth, followed by summer session one, which was scheduled to open up on or begin classes on June the fifth, and then summer session two, which will begin classes until July the tenth. Uh, fall twenty twenty-four, the first class day will be Monday, August the nineteenth. As we look at our current status of the enrollment, uh the the gold bars represent on, represented on these charts represent what was the enrollment on the first class day last year. Uh, but pretty much the gold bars are target that we're trying to achieve between now and the start of classes for the respective semesters. But at this time, I'm happy to report that where we were last year in April uh is behind where we are today. Actually, we're ahead for the month of April compared to last year. So we're we're gonna, we're gonna get there. And so I just wanted to assure that to the board. Um, additional items for summer session one and summer session two, uh a a lot of our enrollment for those two terms is also driven by our dual credit academy, which has not yet been registered yet. So that's another number that we will be adding pretty soon once registration uh opens up for the dual credit students as well. For the fall semester, uh we're we're again, uh the gold bar is representing where we were at the beginning of class in twenty twenty-three, uh and where in the green bar obviously is where we are at today. But again, looking at where we were comparing April to April, we're ahead by three hundred students as of right now. And so eventually, we'll get there. Keep in mind that registration will continue all the way to August uh for the fall semester. Uh additionally, the dual credit students have not been enrolled for the fall yet, so that's another number that will be added or factored in at a later time. Our non-credit or quarter course uh program, uh we're currently at uh six hundred and nineteen students. Uh, as you know, the quarter course uh courses run on 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 a three-month cycle. And so at this time, uh we're only showing the enrollment for the month of March and the month of April. So courses that are going to be ensuing or starting in the month of May, uh that enrollment is still ongoing. And so we should be able to catch up, if not surpass where we were last year pretty soon. And so we're very comfortable where we're at for the third quarter at this time. And uh now I'll pass it on to Ms. Trevino.
Um, good evening again. So I have a uh update for you regarding financial aid. I am happy to report that as of today, we have received financial aid applications, which means our system is ready. Our system is capable of uploading the applications and we are producing information for the students as we are receiving. However, I do wanna present to you in front of you, you have numbers regarding last year and this year. As you all know, we've experienced delays with financial aid, especially with the federal application for student aid. Um, we continue to experience those challenges and you can see it in the numbers. Um, last year, for the entire year, we received a total of eleven thousand two hundred applications. Right now, we are far behind. We are close to four thousand applications. Um, we understand the first day of class, although it sounds far, it's nearing on us um because we do have to process all of these applications that we receive. Um, please know, the Financial Aid Office and the rest of the team continues to work diligently as we receive information. However, I do wanna make note here that, as you can see, the number of rejects or the number of rejected applications that we have is higher, almost double than it was last year. And this definitely has to do with the new application itself, um because mostly the the applications are missing a student or a parent signature. However, unfortunately, the parents cannot yet go back into the application to sign. So that continues to be under construction with the Department of Education. So as they are releasing updates, we are informing the students in this status that they do have to go back in to sign the application. So again, we continue to monitor updates and uh make sure that we are informing students that are under this status that they're able to go back and make corrections. Um, last but not least, there is a suspended file there with the migration to SAS. We have been doing uh a lot of cleanup in regards to Banner and our student information system. Um, last year, we, I'm happy to report that we did not leave any application in suspense, suspended file in the air. We actually were able to process every single one to match a student that applied at one point to Laredo College. This year, we are at five hundred forty-six suspended applications and the Office of Financial Aid and Admissions are working together to ensure that all of those applications get processed and make sure that we communicate to the students diligently. Um, the latest update that we have is that as of May first, the Department of Education has promised, which they have for a while now, um that on May first, we are to receive corrected applications. So out of the three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two, there are some applications that transmitted incorrect information as it relates from the IRS to the application. The Department of Education has uh um assured us that they are making the corrections and they are going to send those over. Unfortunately, we have no way of telling which of those three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two are incorrect. So as we continue to receive applications, we will continue to process them and we will continue to communicate with the student. Any questions with financial?
Chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
What um, and I guess this is also to Dr. Ramirez, what's the contingency plan in the event that the Department of Education, I guess, continues on this slowdown with these applications?
So we currently are working on two major contingency plans. One of them is definitely our scholarships. The current offering of scholarships that we have to students um are being offered earlier than ever. I am also happy to report that as we are at this board meeting, there is a scholarship night happening on our campus, that is LBJ High School. Uh, decided to bring their students to campus to see the wonderful opportunities Laredo College can gift them. And we are offering the scholarships much earlier than we would in previous years. So right now, we're securing students. I was just on my email and I saw that our friends at the Honish Program have already also notified the students of their their position in the Honish Group and they've been offered that scholarship as well. So scholarships have shifted and moved a lot faster to be offered sooner than what we would. Typically, scholarships would get posted in a student account until uh August, right before the first class day, to avoid the drop date. Now, it's much earlier as a recruitment tool to secure the student and reassure them that they have their their um options at Laredo College secured. The second major program we are working on is um currently under development. It is an an analysis to put out a last dollar tuition program. Um, it is taking a lot of analysis. As you can see, we have a low number of applications. We are crunching numbers to see what that would look like um so that we can prepare financially. If we're gonna pull out, put out there the notice that we pledge to cover your last dollar on top of your financial aid. We need to make sure that all of our instruments are ready to go, which they are. Um, however, this being the new year, the expected family contribution and the calculation for financial aid changed. So we are using data from last year to calculate on a new year. Um, and again, putting upfront first federal aid, then scholarships, and then see what that number um would look like so that we can put out a pledge program.
So we're, if I may address the question as well, I I short of giving Mr. Vela a heart attack. First.
Top of all the other.
First, because we're behind on tax collections and then because the FAFSA is not coming through and then so um the perfect storm is brewing, uh and it and it is worrisome. And so how we move forward has to be using our data. And you heard the team talk about uh our ability in our new SAS program to be able to collect that data readily. Uh, right now, we're having to calculate all of that uh much more manually between Maria Luisa and and Jessica and and Steven in financial aid. They're they're all trying to make sure that our projections are closer to realities than guesstimations. Uh, because on any given year, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Aguilar, but on any given year, we give out over seventeen million dollars worth of financial aid. And so we don't have seventeen million dollars in Mr. Vela's back pocket. There's no pot of gold. And so how do we make that up? Uh, the debacle, the Department of Ed debacle is national. It's not, it's not just affecting us. It's affecting everybody. Uh, so there are a couple of things we could possibly capitalize on. There are students out there who think they're going to go to college someplace else next fall. But because their financial aid may not be what they thought it was going to be, they may end up having uh wanting to choose an alternative. And we certainly want to be prepared and ready to be that alternative. Uh, and so how do, how we facilitate that is gonna be critical. We've got a couple of things in the works for some additional PR for the summer, so um, so we're working through that process as well. But it is critical. And and I must say that that Congressman Cuero's office has been very good uh about trying to to push the envelope with the Department of Education. Uh, and they've been keeping in touch with us about what's the latest uh at the department. But when you consider that we're about seven thousand, a little more than seven thousand applications in the hole from where we were last year, that's huge. That's a lot of students. And so that's a lot of hopes and dreams that may get shattered. And so we need to be prepared to to figure out how we're gonna fill in those blanks. Uh, and 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 we will. I'm confident that in the next few weeks, we we will figure something out. And when we meet with you all for the budget, um the first budget, board budget meeting uh on June twentieth, we'll we'll have a stronger proposal for you with with what our plan is going to be.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangan.
Thank you. Um, I know we're getting all the, I guess, most of the bad, you know, but uh I just wanna say thank you, you know, because I know, you know, from Dr. Fred to Mr. Vino, to Mr. Aguilar, to Mr. Vela, I know you guys are all putting together to to help all these kids. And you know, I really do appreciate the fact that you're not, you're literally going to what was said back in the day, no, no child left behind. And I hope you guys take that to heart, because you know, there's a lot of kids like Dr. Meita said, that are depending on that hope, on that dream. So you know, thank you for, you know, doing all this for them. And hopefully, we do get some answers and hopefully, we do have some, a lot of contingency plans. But uh, you know, I hope, Mr. Vela, do whatever you can as well. But you know, we need to help these kids out. And I mean, they're doing their part by doing, by coming and submitting and doing everything. And I don't think we should leave them hanging. You know, I think we should, we should stand beside them and 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 do whatever we have to do and do our part as well. So thank you so much for what you do.
Yes, thank you. And we do really appreciate you uh helping us spread the word that we are doing our very best to uh make sure that we accommodate and 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 secure the students in their future. Um, we do appreciate that uh everybody knows that this is a national uh situation, not exclusive to Laredo College and that we are working on brewing something to ensure that those dreams become a reality.
Top fan on Facebook. I got the badge.
If if you prefer to get updates directly on social media, actually, from the Department of Education, the federal student aid is on Facebook and they uh put out updates and announcements and and information out there. Um, and we do have to be prepared and ready to advocate for our students because we do anticipate our region is going to be highly affected. Again, parents who we are unable to verify because they do not have a social security number is the number one issue that we are facing with these five hundred and seventy-seven reject applications. And not having a timeline as to when they will be able to go back in there to be able to be verified as an individual is is detrimental. So.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
And just, I I just wanna clarify also that um while And just, I just want to clarify also that while the individual, the student may have a social security number, the parent might not. And that has put that application in limbo. But there is, there's another group that's working behind the scenes, trying to really help this. And that's, that's the development team, our donor relations team. They've been out there trying to find additional funding, grants, scholarships with donors to try to help us fill in these gaps. So, so I want to thank Dr. Ortiz and Mr. Gonzalez and their team as well because they're trying to muster up the the conversation. So, thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
If I'm not mistaken, last time we talked about emergency loans. Are these being provided to students while they go through the process?
Yes, it is in the plans that it's part, that is part of the pledge. We do want to make sure that we also modify in addition to the emergency loans. We're already looking at our payment plan options. Currently, our payment plan requires a fifty percent upfront deposit. We are working with seeing what the stipends can be now that we're in an eight-week model, see how we can relay that. So emergency loans are available. We're not yet issuing those out because we're really trying on working with a student getting free money.
Okay. And my second question is, out of those five hundred and thirty-seven?
Five seventy-seven.
Five seventy-seven students, how many of those have not gotten their funds covered?
So all of them. Right now, those applications have not, they came in as rejected files pending verification. Yes. So those five seventy-seven, we're working with very closely and communicating with them. Unfortunately, though, in order for a student to go back into the application and make a correction, the corrections module for the parents has to be up and running, and that is not up and running right now.
Dr. Ramirez, if necessary, can you all extend or keep the extension for the drop date? Because I know for lack of payment, many students are dropped.
Yes. Yes. So we actually have been piloting for the last couple of semesters. I've been working diligently with the Bursaries Office and IT on this. We have piloted only one drop date instead of multiple drop dates, and the drop date is not happening until the Friday before first class day. So that is an extension already. It used to happen a month before, and then a month before when we had multiple deadlines. Now it's happening right the Friday before first class day. That is already an extension about a month or two of what the previous deadlines were. Now that also poses a challenge on advising and registration because we have students in seats who we are trying to secure, who we may not know that they may end up dropping. And we have students in the waitlist, which we are working on to make sure that we account for students who are wanting to register. But because all seats are full, we're working as well with our academic department to ensure that we have the sections needed for enrollment.
But it's a joint effort, and everybody's pulling together. They're all, the chairs, the department heads, everybody's working together to try to make it okay for the rest of us.
This is really sad. Can we have an update for that next meeting?
Yes, definitely.
I just wish that the public, the city would know what's going on. I don't think, you know, that there, a lot of people are oblivious of the fact that we have so many students that are, that need help. I mean, you know, I try and tell my little friends and my little clubs that I belong to. It's, it's really, really sad.
You know, that at Laredo College.
It's times, well, that or whatever, just to help, just to help, you know? I mean, clothes, anything, they don't, just every little bit, yeah. Food, anything.
Anything else?
If there are any, if there are people you would like for the donor relations teams to contact, please share names. Seventeen million. To reach out and, and, and make the ask.
I do, I do want to make one last comment, and Mr. Aguilar brought it up. Just to put this into perspective of the magnitude of the situation, we recently received a letter that our NASFA, which is our National Association of Financial Aid Administrators, president who had been in that chair for over fifteen years, decided to step down because of the magnitude of the situation where this looks like.
Wow.
Okay. Anything else?
Sorry. Thank you. On a much happier note, I am also very happy to report a quick update on commencement. We are looking at commencement. I just noticed I did not put the date on here. But Friday, May ten, Friday, May ten, we are looking at two ceremonies, which is an amazing problem to have. We are expecting to graduate over a thousand students, in which, actually, a thousand five hundred and eighty-one students will be graduating, in which over a thousand students will be participating in our ceremonies. We will be hosting two ceremonies, one at eleven o'clock and one at four P M. At the Sains Auto Arena again on Friday, May ten. The numbers in yellow, in the yellow boxes that you see there, are students who decided to participate in the ceremony, which the first ceremony, the morning ceremony, we're expecting five hundred and thirty-three to attend the ceremony. And the second ceremony, we're expecting five hundred and twenty-three. Please note today is the last day to drop for the second eight weeks, so these numbers may still shift a little. Not, we don't expect a great shift, but just quite so. The numbers in the green box at the bottom, I did want to put a comparison side by side regarding our graduates from the spring twenty twenty-three versus their graduates from the spring twenty twenty-four. These are actual graduates, not people who attended ceremony, but students who earned their degree. And I'm happy to report that we are way above last year's graduation, graduating class for the spring semester. We're currently again at a thousand five hundred and eighty-one versus last year where we were at a thousand one hundred and twenty-eight students. So again, very excited. I did tell Dr. Fred I'm doing a little bit of research to see if the a thousand five hundred and eighty-one is our largest graduating class for the spring, but I will let you know as soon as I finish running the reports.
So I see one of the classes, I mean, one of the graduations at eleven. What time do you technically think it's going to be over?
So we are anticipating a two-hour ceremony, so we're thinking eleven to one. And then we have a quick lunch break for those that need to go to lunch, but we also need to have a turnover because of the surprises that we're going to have during the ceremony. We've got to do some cleanup, some reset and whatnot before we open the door again at three o'clock. So eleven.
We will need to be back by three, the board.
Lunch will be provided.
Yes.
On the premises, so you don't have to leave if you don't want to.
And then we.
That's why I was asking, so if we could leave.
You can, if you're going to let us know because we are ordering lunch.
Okay, you can eat before you leave. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is nine E, presentation of viewpoint commercial, Dr. Diana Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Ramirez, of course, administration, faculty and guests. My name is Dr. Diana Ortiz, Vice President of Institutional Advancement. Today, I'm going to be sharing with you a really exciting video. Last year, we entertained and talked about participating in a, on a search to determine if we were going to be working on a viewpoint with Dennis Quaid series. This series would entail coming to the college, interviewing some of our faculty, interviewing some of our students, coming to get information on our programs, taking some information from videos that we already had, taking information from some of the press releases that we had done, some of the things that were historical here, and creating a series of videos that we could use. One is a short commercial that is going to be aired. We're going to have fifty airings at stations CNN, MSNBC, Fox, as well as some in the areas here, Laredo, Zapata and Roma were the cities of choice. Airing will begin starting June, and we do have access to the demo that we can use for our websites, for our promotions. And then we have the commercials that will be airing. Today, I'm going to share, which it's, it's a longer version of the commercial, but you will get a good idea of what the commercial is going to look like. And this particular video does have the interviews that are very, very impactful that we're going to be able to showcase. So as Ms. Robinho was talking about the things, the challenges that we have, as we're talking about what it is and how we can have a contingency plan, know that this is going to be probably very, very enlightening and, and, and very, very hopeful to some of the things that have been happening in academics, community ed, our continuing adult ed and many of our allied health programs. So here we go.
Let's roll it.
Let's see.
Community colleges are the backbone of our national, regional and local economies, providing essential academic and workforce training to people from all walks of life. Undoubtedly, the most flexible, accessible and affordable option in higher education. A growing number of recent high school graduates and non-traditional students are now turning to community colleges in order to get the job skills and education needed to succeed in a rapidly changing economy.
Well, community colleges are not only accessible, but they're affordable, and they're also flexible. Community colleges provide workforce trained and skilled and ready to be employed. We're also providing students with the foundation to a academic career, should they choose that.
A pioneering community college located in South Texas with over seventy-six years of history and legacy, Laredo College is changing the landscape of higher education by transforming and redefining the traditional role of community colleges. Built on the pillars of recruitment, retention, graduation and job placement, Laredo College meets students where they are, propelling them forward, engaging them to succeed, and bridging them from the known to the new.
Community colleges offering bachelor's degrees at a community college price is unheard of. And that's exactly what we're doing today. And so we take everyone from where they are to where they want to be.
I started at a university at first. I realized that maybe it wasn't the best fit at that time in my life. I knew I wanted to be somewhere in the healthcare field, but a university, it's more bigger community, so it was very challenging to get accepted into the nursing program. You know, Laredo being smaller community, I reached out to Laredo College and I said, maybe my future is here. So what appealed to me about Laredo College was the benefits that it provided to me and to my family as well, whether that be paying my finances, my tuition, my books, the fees that all come along with being in college. That really attracted me towards the college because I do come from an economically disadvantaged home. So this really provided me with a good, stable education, knowing that my college tuition was paid for.
Laredo College has something for everyone, whether it comes in the form of an academic degree, a technical or vocational career, or a workforce certification. LC is adapting to meet the ever-changing needs of the business and industries in South Texas and helping students chart a path for their future.
And so there are three components that I include in my teaching philosophy. And the very first one are critical thinking skills because that carries them through all their life problems, whether they're academic or in life in general. Creativity is the second component that I have, being able for them to creatively learn, become resourceful and independent, autonomous. And the third one that I think is probably the most critical is lifelong learning skills. And I believe those three things are crucial for the student to not only be successful in their, in the course that they're taking, and then, of course, getting their degree, but also to be successful in life.
Education is an equalizer that provides the necessary skill set and knowledge for students from diverse backgrounds. By providing access to affordable, innovative programs that lead to employment, Laredo College propels students to change their socioeconomic realities, educating and preparing them to meet the ever-changing demands of the workforce.
Well, being that our population, over ninety percent is Hispanic, we're very fortunate to have most of our faculty to be bilingual, English and Spanish. I think the other thing that separates us is that we try to bring in a lot of the Hispanic cultural heritage into the environment here at Laredo College.
As the workforce needs of business and industry continue to evolve, community colleges must meet students where they are academically, technically, socially, emotionally and physically. The future will require an education. Get it at Laredo College. It's affordable, accessible and attainable. For course information or to schedule a visit, go to laredo.edu or call nine five six seven two one five one zero nine.
So, so as mentioned, this is the long version of the demo. We do have a short clip that's going to be airing starting June in the Laredo area, Zapata, Roma. And then we do have access to use this to promote, you know, our programs, our, the different things that we have going on with the students. The student testimonials obviously are very, very impactful. And I think that it's something that's, that's a really nice treat. And, and again, we started it a year ago, and, and here we are. These are the results.
Yeah, good.
Very good. Yes. Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
You, you mentioned the area, including Roma. What about Hebronville? What about Jim Ho County?
They don't have a TV station. They get the K G N S TV station. They don't, they don't have a TV station.
Oh, that's what it was.
And we did ask, just so you know, that there was a possibility about having it shown and seen in Nuevo Laredo. And they did indicate that that was not something that they could do. So we, this was our second choice, which was the area to focus on the area of students that are most, most probable to come here.
Jeff.
They get it anyway.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
Oh, absolutely. We already have Mr. Chavez. He was going to be kicking it off on the website and social media, the short, short version. And they're working on getting that. We're working, we're waiting for the final version. But in the meantime, he's also working on something that we're going to put up that's very similar.
Good. Very good.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Next item is nine F, notification of the serving of alcohol beverages at the private David B. Barclay Cantu Memorial Chapel or the Commander's Home. P nine for private event, ask for Laredo College Board Policy. G D A local, community expression and use of college facilities conduct on college district premises. Dr. Diana Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, again, board members, president and faculty, staff and guests, Dr. Diana Ortiz, Vice President of Institutional Advancement. This request is for an event that we're going to be hosting on May the fifteenth. It's, it's a gratitude ceremony for one of our donors, PNC Bank. And we're just asking to let you know that there, it's going to be a reception, that's a two-hour reception. And we do want to make the request that, and to let you know that we would like to have some spritzers and some adult beverages available for them. They've been very generous to our college and continue to be. And we just wanted to make you aware of that. Invitations will be forthcoming for you all, and it will be on May fifteen. And, and we have decided it will be at the chapel and not at the Commander's Home. We probably will have the Commander's Home open for tours if they'd like to see because a lot of people are very excited about the changes that have been afforded to us with the Fernando Salinas Trust gift. But it will be taking place at the chapel.
Good job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is nine G, Foreign Trade Zone Designation Request, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair, just for the record, the, the items for Foreign Trade Zone area approvals were given to me a while back. My responsibility is just to make you all aware. We received another request from Eduardo y Lozano and Company, Inc., the square footage there. Um, the square footage there, uh, is 43,389 square feet and it's located at, at, uh, 15, 15241. Let me see if I have the right, Fatima Drive. Uh, and so, uh, we've already gone ahead and submitted the letter uh, back to, to them, to the District Attorney's Office, letting them know that, I'm sorry, not the District Attorney's Office, pardon me. To the city, pardon, to the city that requested the approval. We've already submitted the letter and so just, it was just an FYI.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elisa.
I, I don't, did we approve this? Cause I know we have to approve it.
Not anymore. Um, the, the board.
They gave her permission. Okay.
We gave her permission sometime back. We put it back on the, on the president for them, for her to approve them. But she does need to let us know that she's approved them.
And there's a copy, um, of the letter in your packets.
Yes. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, the next item is executive session. Before we go to executive session, I, I'm going to go ahead and call Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to motion to table item 10C.
Second.
So I have a motion to table 10C. And I have a second by Mr. Angel.
The table?
Table.
Is it going to be indefinitely?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you make it?
No, table means that.
Table. But table indefinitely means you need to, could never bring it back.
Right.
Table means that.
That's what it means.
Table means it's gone forever and never.
amended to, to table indefinitely.
Yeah. Second.
So I have a, a motion and a. Any additional discussion?
No.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, I'm going to recommend we go. You need to motion to go and get, yes, sir.
Madam President, now you could call items 10A, B and D and move into executive session on those items.
So on, on 10, we have 10A, closed session discussion with the college president pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551 dot zero seven four regarding the employment, reassignment and duties of certain employees due to a reorganization. 10B is closed session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551 dot zero seven one and 551 dot zero seven four to discuss recommendations for the non-renewal of employment contracts of Laredo College employees under Board Policy DMAB Local, Term Contracts, Non-Renewal and Related Legal Issues. 10B is closed session discussion with Laredo College District Attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot zero seven one to receive legal advice concerning the use of the Laredo College logo and other trademarks, ask for Board of Trustees's policy, CT Local Intellectual Property.
Motion to go to executive session. Second.
So I have, let me call, uh, Ms. Ramos. She has a question.
Mr. Mayor, uh, 11C shouldn't have been also tabled?
11C will be an action item and you, you could table it. It really, it just needs no action. If you call that item up, no action needs to be taken. I think the other item 10C, we are going back into executive sessions. Just not a need to, to discuss that because of the, the matter has been.
No, I didn't, I didn't say anything.
She didn't say 10C.
Oh.
Pardon? She didn't say 10C.
Yes, okay.
Just gave me.
Okay. 11.
Oh, for the question?
So I have a motion by Mr. Delgado, a second. Oh. Or vice versa.
Yes.
By Mr. Angel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, we're going to executive session. The time is 7:49 and the board will adjourn into executive session. Thank you.
The next item is 11E consent for the sale of property held by a taxing entity as trustee pursuing Texas Property Tax Code Section 34.05. Mr. Rusty Muir.
Madam President and Board members, I'll just introduce this subject and attorney with our office, Mr. Guillermo Garcia is here and has details that he can fill you in on. But this involves a property that had been put up for foreclosure. It did not sell, so the Laredo City of Laredo took it as trustee. And there's a considerable amount of taxes that erode exceeds the value of the land. The reason for that is that the improvements that were on there at one time burned down. And so for the city to sell the property, they want to sell it to a private person, not by auction. We need consent of the board. And so if Mr. Garcia can fill you in on the details, I think, yeah, enough, if not more information than you need.
Good evening, everybody. Guillermo Garcia here from Casamurran Perez. As Mr. Muir stated, this is a, originally there were three properties. It's a 2011 and 2013 lawsuits. So they've been on, these lawsuits had been there for a while. The delinquent tax amounts had reached well over, I think, $175,000, $180,000. The properties, two of the properties were sold at auction at full price. The remaining property that did not sell at auction was this last property that had burned down. It's an estate and the estate had not been taken care of it and it burned down. The reason why the tax stayed so high is because back in 2011, the value was set at the amount of the property before it had burned down. After it had burned down, Webb County appraisal district did not make any adjustments and remained at a very high level. And so the taxes kept on accumulating. Years later, when they went and asked for an adjustment, they were only able to go back so many years, the law only allows for a four-year rollback. And so there were several years that were taxes that had accrued at a much higher level. As a result, there's a little over, well over $100,000 worth of taxes on this property and the land is only worth $70,000. And so the, the offer on the table right now is the value of the land itself, $70,000. All of the taxing entities would take an adjustment percentage per capita of what they, of the percentages that are owed to them. At this point right now, Laredo College on this property. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven D use of the Laredo College logo and other trademarks as per Board of Trustees policy. C T local intellectual property. No action. No action. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, I don't believe any action is needed on this item.
Okay, so no action. Take it. The next item is eleven E consent for the sale of property held by a taxing entity as trustee pursuing Texas Property Tax Code section thirty four point zero five, Mr. Rusty Muir.
Madam President and Board members, I'll just introduce this subject and attorney with our office, Mr. Guillermo Garcia is here and has details that he can fill you in on. But this involves a property that had been put up for foreclosure. It did not sell, so the Laredo, city of Laredo took it as trustee. And there's a considerable amount of taxes that erode exceeds the value of the land. The reason for that is that the improvements that were on there at one time burned down. And so for the city to sell the property, they want to sell it to a private person, not by auction. We need consent of the board. And so if Mr. Garcia can fill you in on the details, I think you have enough, if not more information than you need.
Good evening, everybody. Guillermo Garcia here from Casamur and Perez. As Mr. Muir stated, this is a originally there are three properties. It's a two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen lawsuits. So they've been on these lawsuits had been there for a while, the delinquent tax amounts had reached well over I think a hundred and seventy five, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The properties, two of the properties were sold at auction at full price. The remaining property that did not sell at auction was this last property that was that had burned down. It's an estate and the estate had not been taken care of it and it burned down. The reason why the tax stayed so high is because back in two thousand eleven, the value was set at the amount of the property before it had burned down. After it had burned down, Webb County appraisal district did not make any adjustments. And remained at a very high level. And so the taxes kept on accumulating. Years later, when they went and asked for an adjustment, they were only able to go back so many years along the allowance for a four year rollback. And so there were several years that were taxes that had accrued at a much higher level. As a result, there's a little over, well over a hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes on this property. And the land is only worth seventy thousand dollars. And so the the offer on the table right now is the value of the land itself, seventy thousand dollars. All of the taxing entities would would take an adjustment percentage per capita of what they of what they of the percentages that are owed to them. At this point right now, Laredo College on this property would would receive nine point zero five percent of the of the seventy thousand dollar offer, which equates to six thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars. The amount of tax that Laredo College is currently owed on that property is fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty six dollars. But given the fact that the property is burned and and the taxes way exceed the value of the property. And since it's off the tax rolls because the city of Laredo has it, took it as trustee. It's not even accruing anything anymore as far as that. We have a buyer that's willing to pay at least the value of the land and it gets back on the taxes. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Delgado?
Is this the normal process for whenever this situation occurs to where the city takes over as trustee and is sold as such?
The, any of the entities can take it as trustee and it can accept private offers. Any of the entities can accept private offers. It just so happened that in this case, since the city had taken it as trustee, that's who the the potential buyer is is working with. But yes, had it been Laredo College that had taken it as trustee, we would have probably been negotiating or we could have negotiated had they approached us. But that's normally the procedures and and I think according to code, it has to go before the the entities' boards for approval. So that's why we're here. Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
To have a motion by Mr. Delgado, a second by Mr. Angel. Hey, discussion?
Aye. I mean, sorry. I want to go home.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is president's remarks. We have twelve A, the campus police, personnel and travel reports. And then we have twelve B president's remarks, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Madam Chair, it gives me and trustees, it gives me great pleasure to make the announcement that our esports team sitting in the audience are the national champions in the community college.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Cano to come to the podium and introduce the players if you don't mind. I know it's late, but they just finished. Mr. Cano?
All worth it. That's okay.
Board, Ivan Cano, for the record. I'm extremely excited. Tough season. Undefeated. We knocked off the national champions that have never lost, have five Brazilians on full scholarships. Five boys from Laredo. They wanted to steal one of them last semester. Eduardo Sors Garza, if you want to stand up, he was offered an eighty five percent scholarship at Oklahoma. I was able to convince him to stay. Because I knew they wanted him because he's really good. He's probably the best player in the nation when it comes to junior colleges. So that's Eduardo Garza. If I, this again, I agree with you. So his right, we have Jonathan Boguñeto. Little story about Jonathan, when I was at another institution, he was there to some personal problems, he had to drop out of school. Last semester, I heard he was interested in coming back. I told him, L C is a good option for you. He's doing a certificate, an electrician assistant. And he's the captain of the team for a semester here, but he helped us out tremendously. So huge shout out to him as well.
Bring him forward, Ivan.
You guys can come forward.
Yeah.
Everyone.
Forward.
Yeah, everyone.
Yeah.
I'll talk about.
Come on down.
Come on down. Here in the front. This is Hector Boten Rico. He's actually a work study. He, and by work study, I mean, he's a coach. I have a seventeen page report on the team we just beat that he made. Every single map, every single move that they make, he scouted them. And a lot of the time, he only gets nineteen hours. A lot of the time is on his own. And he's graduated and transferring to a four year institution after this. So two weeks from now, he'll be graduating and walking the stage. So it's a huge accomplishment for him. And I was able to convince him to coach for us as well last semester and turned out really, really well for us. So huge shout out to Hector as well. This is Daniel Yuki Alcorta. I would say he's the heart of the team. So much emotion in this young man. Highs are highs, lows are lows, but he's the heart of the team. He promised, if you guys remember I Fox, the one that won the other national title for, that's his uncle. So he promised him that he was going to win that national title and look at him now. Last, but definitely not least. We have Emiliano Godina Kurinki. He actually lives in San Antonio. So he takes most of the classes online. He was able to join us today, which I'm glad. He pays in San Antonio to go play at an esports arena to be able to keep up with the type of hardware that we have here. Huge addition. He's also graduating in two weeks. So we're losing Hector, we're losing Emmy. But we keep the other three and we have more incoming. We have one student right now taking his GED courses with us. And he's going to join us next semester. So that's Emiliano for you guys as well. I want to give a shout out as well for Mr. Rick Cruz, who's our part timer. He's a he's my right hand man when it comes to esports. He's helped us out tremendously. He believed in the team. We believed in him and he's been a huge help. Over there in the back, I want to give a huge shout out to Mr. Daniel Pescador. He, go for it, go for it, go for it. For about a month and a half, he volunteered his time. He was our caster, our commentator. For about a month and a half now, he's a work study for the institution. So huge shout out to Danny. I appreciate you, man. So, thank you. And I'll shout out. I'll shout him out because he graduated last semester from L C. He was a part of the team. He's transferring in the summer to a four year institution and he's here to support us. So thank you, Diego. Appreciate you, man. And yes, hopefully next month we could do a formal presentation. We are getting national championship rings. I'm getting one to represent the board as well. Your ring, one for the president, one for them. So it is the highest tier available. Over three hundred schools, junior colleges that compete in this tournament. And we, like I said, we've knocked off schools who have.
No, go ahead, Madam Chair. Would you mind providing us a little bit more background about about your game, about your sport?
Of course.
Because to us, it's a new sport.
Yes.
So would you mind explaining and providing us with a little bit more
Of course.
background, a little bit more detail, if you don't mind.
Of course, I don't mind. So the game title that we play or the sport, as I like to call it, is called Valorant. This is a five B five game. So these five are the five starters. There, we don't have bench, we don't have anything. These are the five boys that play in day in, day out. This game is about communication. It is a gun game. There is no blood, it's not gory. And it's a, it's kind of complicated to explain in a few words. We will be putting out some videos and things like that. We recorded a lot of good clips of the boys there at the arena. And the arena this summer should be looking a whole lot better as well. But
Judge wants to be part of the team next year.
We got, we got two open spots. We could definitely, we could definitely get you there. So this entire semester was was tough. We were the team to beat that Oklahoma school. I don't know their entire number. They go by Neo. Like I said, they their whole school revolves around that team. And like I said, they have, I believe Eddie can attest, they have five Brazilians and they're all on full rides. Because they're just here to play that game. And with five boys from Laredo, all of them from this town and Laredo as well, we were able to beat them hard work dedication and at the same time, they all have to maintain their GPAs. They all have, they, we did plenty of community services as well throughout the semester. And like Eddie said earlier, we go outside the Maravilla and we gather around the Palomino that's there. That's where we do our breakout. And like how he said, we became a family and in, I think I've been here eight months. And I'm extremely happy and I'm really at a loss for words because these, these guys just I don't, I was a college athlete and the work they put in, the communication they put in, the love they have for this sport is amazing to me. And they know how much it means to me and how much it means to them. I actually made him a little bit of a, of a bet. So they're going to shave my head in two weeks. They're going to shave my head in two weeks. So Dr. Ramirez really wants them to shave my beard, but it's just going to be the head. I told them to wait after graduation. So yes, after graduation. But yes, I'm extremely proud of them. And yeah. I don't know if you guys have any other questions that I can answer, or maybe you want to talk to them, to any single one of them, but
Judge wants to know when the ring fitting is.
The ring. Tomorrow, figure all that out and then we'll see when that happens. So, yes.
Wonderful.
Congratulations. Mr. Martinez?
Madam Chair, if it's possible, can we come up with a resolution for each one of the students, including our, our coach? I think it is quite an honor, particularly more so when we have this minority institution as this, as we are frequently referred to. And yet they, they actually won over.
Yes.
I, I think they deserve perhaps a, a resolution that can be worked out with legal counsel. And maybe even properly framed so each one of them can, can, can very, very well displayed in their own personal homes.
I mean, yes. Yes.
This is, this is quite an honor.
Yes, it is.
Madam Chair. That certainly deserves the kind of recognition that, that they, they obviously merit, in my opinion. If it's all right with you.
Yes, definitely. Later, okay. Can we take a picture?
Well, we can, but do you want to take it now or do you want to take it when?
I would like to take it next time, just so that we have, hopefully we have the trophy and the ring by then. So I would like
You don't want to post anything on social media tomorrow?
We already have a lot of pictures and videos, but if you want, we can still take a picture so we can post on our social media and then we'll do another one.
It would be nice.
Perfect.
Come on.
All right.
Come on, guys.
Yeah, we're going to do enough. We're going to do enough.
Impressive.
Oh, their arena, they call it. Like a classroom that we converted.
Thank you, Mr. Cano. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, boy.
Now you all can celebrate.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Very well deserved, gentlemen.
Because it gets crazy. Okay, and just a couple more things to, to end tonight's meeting. Thank you all very much for all the support. Last weekend, we had our car show at the South Campus and it was extremely well attended. I'm sure we'll get a, a final report from the team later, but we had over, I think it was, we ended up with like two hundred and thirty vehicles. And it was just an incredible, incredible car show. Our clubs and organizations that actually sold food and drinks did very well that day. So overall, I think it was a huge success and it was, it was a fun time. Our job fair today, we had a, a very exciting job fair. Ms. Sandra Cortez and her team with the Workforce Development Center put on our, our job fair in partnership with the city of Laredo and in partnership with the Work, Workforce Solutions of South Texas. I always have to think about that. And they had over four hundred and fifty people, is that correct, Ms. Cortez? Actually show up to the job fair. So kudos to them, congratulations to the team and, and our, our thanks to the city and to Workforce Solutions of South Texas for their partnership. Just so that you know, there is funding available for those that want to come to school through the city funding that we received. And through Workforce Solutions, there is funding for childcare and uniforms and equipment that or supplies that individuals might need. And so there, there is incredible amount of support that we're getting to rescale and retool our local community. So thank you to them. I also want to congratulate our administrative assistants, both Ms. Elizabeth Bocanegra and Mirasol Tavares and all of our administrative assistants at Laredo College in recognizing them this week for all their hard work and dedication to Laredo College. Thank you, Liz. And while there are so many things going on on campus and it's evident, you all see the, the articles in the paper every day and in the news. There are so many things going on. We're trying to give you a glimpse at these meetings of a little bit of what not only our, our staff is doing, what our, what our employees are doing, but also what our students are doing. And so we're, we're very excited. Attached to your packet, you also have a list of events that are coming up. We have events every day, probably from now until the end of May. So we hope that you can join us at some of these events. Please take them. If you have questions, call us, ask us. We'll, we'll be happy to, to help and support however we can, but we certainly love it when you show up. And I know that it means a lot to, to our employees and to our students when you're here. So we look forward to seeing you at graduation. We also have the Camilo Prada graduation coming up and that's, that's a big deal. I will be out of town Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I think I come back Thursday. We, we have a team of us that are going to the Excelencia Conference. This is the first step in our recognition by Excelencia. It, it is one of the, the, these awards as an institution that Hispanic serving institutions want to have. And so we've started, we've started to do some of the legwork on that. And so we've got a group of folks that are going with us to that meeting. Also, along those lines, just so that you can mark your calendars, our first budget meeting, budget workshop will be June twentieth. That is a critical date. We do need to have you all try to be here because we're going to start preparing our budget for next year. We want to give you the first glimpse of that. So that's June twentieth at six o'clock in here. It will be here at the, at the boardroom. And then on June twenty second, on Saturday. And then on June twenty-second, on Saturday, uh, nine to probably two or three o'clock in the afternoon. Martha Ellis from the Texas Success Center in Austin, uh, is going to be our consultant for the day to do our board workshop. And so our board retreat. So I hope that you all are available and can join us on those two days. Those are very critical days for us. Uh, with that, I can tell you that inside your, your, um, your packet is also our police report uh, and our, uh, all, all of our positions and, and the reports that we've, we provide for you monthly. Uh, but if there is any information that you all need from us throughout the month, please don't hesitate to call. I'm here day in and day out, as, as is the, the incredible team that we have. Uh, so please call us i- if there's any question that you might have, if there's something that you feel we're, we're not representing the institution to your liking or something we could do better. Uh, we're always open to suggestions and ideas and, and we appreciate the support that you give us. And with that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Uh, the next item is, the next meeting date will be Thursday, May the thirtieth at six PM, regular Board of Trustees' meeting. That's all I have. So I have Mr. Tranghel, motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything.